Okay, welcome back, everybody. This is the afternoon session of October 5th. We're going to have a tax deed auction. I want to remind everyone that we are on live TV, so that if everything you say, we will pick up everything you say, so be careful what you say. At this auction, the county will attempt to sell its specific properties to the highest bidder. Boarder's exhort the right to reject any and all bids. Notice publicly to the Star News, contain the amount of the tax due for each property. A minimum bid for each of the properties is the amount of the tax due on each property, including interest accrued through today. All properties will be sold to the highest bidder. Highest bidder will be obligated to purchase the property at the bid price and tender that amount to the treasurer no later than today at 5:00. So if you do, you are the winning bid, you have to have your money in by 5:00 today. For each property sold, the county will transfer its interest by a quitclaim deed without any warranty or representation. You should consult your attorney if you have any questions about the property or interests that you are purchasing. You should further consult an attorney if you have any questions regarding the statutory manner of distributing funds or any fees or liens associated with these properties. The county cannot give you any legal advice, and please allow 10 days for the deeds to be prepared and recorded. So at this time, the first one up is parcel number RP 005210050240. Tamarack Exhort, Planned Unit Development Phase 2.3, Lot 24, Block 5. The address is 38 Clearwater Court, Downly, Idaho. So I need an opening bid of $9,347.95. Do I have that bid? Is anyone interested in $9,500? $95 in the back, $9,600. $9,700. 10, let's go $10,000. $10,000 over here, do I have $10,500? $10,005, do I have $11,000? $11,000. $11,005? $11,005, $12,000. $12,500. We have somebody in the back, $13,000. $13,000 in the back, $13,500? $13,500. We have it in the back for $12,500 for you. $13,000 in the back, okay, $13,500. $13,500 over here, now $14,000. $14,000, now $14,500. $14,500, do I have $15,000? $15,000 here, got $15,500 in the back. $16,000. $16,000. Is that yes? $16,500. In the back, we have $17,000. $17,000, $17,500 in the back. $18,000? $18,000 to you, $18,500? $18,500, $19,000. $19,000, $19,500. Now $20,000. $20,000 to the lady, $20,500. $20,500, uh, $21,000. In the back, $21,500. $22,000. $22,000 here, $22,500. And here, $23,000. $23,000 in the back, $23,500? $24,000. $24,000 here, $24,500? $25,000. In the back, $25,500? $25,500, do I have $26,000? $26,000 in the back, $26,500? $26,500 to you, $27,000. $27,000, $27,500 in the back, $28,000. $28,500 in the middle. $29,000. $29 in the back, $29,500. $30,000. $30,000 in the back, $30,500? $31,000. $32,000. $33,000. $34,000. $34,000. $34,000, $35,000 in the back. $36,000 in the back. $37,000. $38,000. In the back, $39,000. $40,000. $41,000. $42,000. $43,000. $44,000. $45,000. $46,000. $47,000. $48,000. $49,000. $50,000. $50,500? $50,500 to you, ma'am, I have $50,000 in the back. So it's $50,500 to you? $51,000. $52,000. $53,000. $54,000. $54, $55,000. $56,000. $57,000. $58,000. $59,000. $60,000. Okay, we're gonna do this a little different. $65,000. $70,000. $80,000. $85,000. $90,000. Okay, $85,000 to you, $90,000? $86,000. $87,000. Do I have $87,000? $88,000? Yes. $89,000. $89,000, no, $90,000. Okay, we got $89,000 to you, how about $89,500? In the back? Uh, $89,600. Yes, $89,700. $89,800. $89,900. $90,000. $90,000, anybody? In the back, a new bidder. $91,000 to you, sir. I got $90 in the back, $91,000. $92,000. $92 in the back, $93,000. $92, $93,000. $94,000 in the back, $95,000. In the back, $96,000. We have $95,000, we go $96,000. $97,000. $97 in the back, $98,000. $99,000. $100,000. Okay, we're gonna do this a little different. $100,000, let me think here. $105,000. $110,000. $110,000 to you, sir, anybody else? We got $105, do we have $110? Okay, I'll go $106,000. Okay, $107,000. $108,000. $109,000. Now, we'll do $110,000. $111,000. $111,000, $112,000. $113,000. $114,000. $115,000. $116,000. $117,000. $118,000. $119,000. $120,000. Now, I'm gonna do it different, $125,000. $125,000 to you, sir. Okay, $130,000. We got $125, $130,000. Oh, man, you guys make me work. How about $126,000? We got $125 here at the red hat. $126,000 going once. No, no. I got $125,000. Anybody else want to bid on this? $126,000. $126,000 going once. I know, I got $125, I need $126, going twice? I sold it to the guy in the red hat for $125,000. Can you state your name for the record, sir? Dan Johnson, thank you, sir. Hey. Well, they're filling out the paperwork and to move on to the next one. This is RP 00269000230. This is timber end subdivision, Lot 23, in Howling Court, Wolf Court, Cascade, Idaho. And I need $1,788.17. Who will open it? Okay, we have one in the back, we have $2,000. $2,000 here, $2100. $2100. $2200. $2300. $2400. $2500. $2600. $2700. $2800. $2900. $3,000. We're gonna do it different now. $4,000. $5,000. $6,000. $7,000. $8,000. $9,000. This is out of the S, $9, $10,000. Okay, we're gonna do a little different. $15,000. $20,000. $25,000. $30,000. Uh, $31,000. You go $31,000. Nope, you're all done? You, you want it for $31,000? $32,000, new bidder. $32,000 to you, ma'am. Yes? $33,000. $34,000. $35,000. $36,000. $37,000. $38,000. $39,000. $40,000. $45,000. Too scary, too big of a jump? I thought I'd catch somebody. How about $41,000? $42,000. $43,000. $44,000. $45,000. $46,000. $47,000. $48,000. $49,000. $50,000. $51,000. $52,000. $53,000. $54,000. $55,000. $56,000. $57,000. $58,000. $59,000. $60,000. $61,000. You know, you're all done? $59,000. Anybody else want to bid on this? I need $60,000. We got $59,000, I need $60,000. Going once? $60,000 going twice? I sold it to the lady. For $59,000. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Have a great day, be safe out there.
Can I see those properties?
No, you can't.
Would you say the one for the Tamarack lot was $120?
What they gotta buy on that one?
Yeah, they were both good buyers.
Actually, this one was $59,000, the sure is past the value.
So we get the value then, do we? Huh?
All right, come on in, guys. You're next.
Price is Right.
Price is Right. We're auctioning off minus gold today. How much money you got?
They looking pretty good.
Auction in there. You have a homey career, that's all you.
You think so?
Figure out what they're worth and then go.
Well, and the updates, the difference between what the taxes owed and what they brought in, that money stayed in the county, but the legislature took that away from us. And so it goes back to the previous owner. And that can be a rub, because sometimes you got two or three, or they got, and then they gotta figure out a way to split that. But that's the treasurer's problem. Could be a mortgage company, it could be a lien, it could be all kinds of stuff on that.
Well, and really, that guy, I don't know why he didn't sell his own property, but the last one he got full value for. So we just sold one without real estate.
Yeah, that's maybe what he had intended, I don't know. Okay, we're gonna move right on into our next agenda item, which is, luck here. I believe that, yep, connection item. This is decision on CUP 20-12, Stibnite Projects Logistics Facility. And I guess, before we get into too deep, I want to ask Cindy if she has anything new or different? Has there been any other? Any other information, come forward.
Um, yes, I did, you know, the public hearing has been closed, so if you accept any other information into the record, you have to reopen the public hearing. I do have a letter from Parametric, the engineer, for the applicant on the Thunder City Road bypass evaluation. Um, it talks about why the warm like Highway 55 intersection is the preference over having a bypass coming in in Thunder City with the large trucks and things. Um, in my opinion, it's some interesting valuable information. If you reopen it, then you have to reopen the public hearing. So my question on that would be, because I have questions on the road too. And, but it specifically states in the conditions that they will work with IP in order to mitigate road issues. Um, and so can we put some additional consideration there?
Oh, absolutely. And we don't have to make a final decision today. We have time to do this. My concern is, I don't think we want to reopen this public hearing.
So, um, if you, if you choose that, then 17 would cover that, because it says they shall enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners to mitigate impacts to the road system and Idaho Transportation Department. So I think then, you know, outside of this, we can talk about what are the best options to mitigate our traffic concerns. So that would be a condition of approval if you choose to do that.
And can we put prior building permit on that? Or should we put some kind of a time limitation on that?
I would actually have that one prior to any work being done on site. Because when they start the construction of the stormwater management, and site grading, all of that will entail the large trucks. So you should have a pretty good idea of what's going to happen before they start working on site.
Before site construction begins?
Yeah, prior to work being done. Same as the stormwater and the site grading. I know in past conversations, they wanted to put up a sign. You might put that in the condition, then go ahead and sign up.
Is that an off-site sign out of Highway or somewhere?
No, it would be a sign on-site. We don't allow off-premises to act on site. But the warm legs, that's actually in the city, so we don't, that's not our intersection.
Okay, that's a good point.
So.
So that would be condition 19?
Um, condition 17 would say, shall enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners to mitigate impacts to the road system and Idaho Transportation Department prior to any onsite site grading or construction except for the placement of a sign.
So that's where you're gonna cover this one? Prior to any site work?
Prior to any site grading except placement of a sign. And you might, you know, in the interest of all of Valley County, allow, um, any timber management. I mean, if they want to take off dead timber or fuels, you might want to let that.
That would make sense, that needs to be done, to be just possible. So are you adding that as an additional condition or adding that to 17?
I think it's 17.
So timber, timber removal is permitted? How do you want to say that?
Timber or fuel removal.
Or allowed?
Yes. So it, so it would read in its entirety, shall enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners to mitigate impacts to the road system and Idaho Transportation Department prior to any site grading or improvements except placement of a sign in timber or fuel removal for, for fire protection. We'll put for fire protection.
So I guess, then my next question is, and I don't know who's gonna speak for you guys? Is that?
Well, nobody's gonna speak for them.
They're just here to listen today, okay? And then you had on number 18, a bond will be required.
Right.
And I like that idea.
Yeah, that, a condition of the 18. Oh, now that we've gone past the point where you're not going to reopen the public hearing and accept the letter, I would like a chance to present portions of the Valley County Code that I wanted to bring for your attention. Um, the first one is 9587B, criteria for granting. And it states the commissioners will grant the application where the preponderance of the evidence presented to the commission establishes. And then number three, the proposed use will not place any unreasonable burden on the public infrastructure. Okay?
Okay.
Public infrastructure would be considered your road system, and I, I think we've covered that. It would be housing, it would be schools, it would be hospitals, that type of thing. This is not a PUD, this is just a site-specific conditional use permit. But if this was a planned unit development, then 998F states plans for housing employees, construction workers, subcontractors, independent contractors, or any other persons related to the associated, or associated with the applicant's buildings, improvements, developments, or temporary uses during and after the proposal. So I know that it's, it's been a concern about where all the employees are going to live. But I would remind you that this CUP is just for the logistics facility. There are 40 employees that are going to be employed there, is what they've, they've stated. But there's a bigger issue, like the bigger issue with the roads and all of those employees that are going to be parking at this facility. So I don't know that you can do a black and white consideration and say this 40 is totally independent, he can't think of anything else. That's why I am proposing that additional condition of approval that says, shall enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners to mitigate impacts to community housing prior to issuance of any building permits. And that would give you the ability to open up that larger conversation to determine if any housing should be provided.
I like that a lot. I mean, that was the main concern that people had while here, is, you know, what's, what's gonna happen with housing? Local housing has not been addressed at all. And this, that this just gives us an opportunity to have a conversation. If they bring in 40 brandy people from outside the area to fill these positions, there are not 40 local. What's the scare to put people in? And I think that at that moment in time, we need to have a conversation about what that looks like.
Well, and I know the applicant addresses early in the system, because that was my big concern with the statement that they were just gonna pay everybody a large wage so that they could compete against other folks to buy that housing. To me, that is just the opposite of what I want to see happen, because you compete with our lower-wage earners in the county, they get chased out. Now we have nobody that can do the service job. They gotta drive from Meadows, or Orchard Band, or whatever it works. So I feel like, you know, somewhere along the line, we've gotta, we gotta sit down and talk about employee housing. You guys build it, buy the ground, build it, or we? I don't know. I'm gonna let you guys come up with that answer, but I think just paying a bigger salary is not, not gonna solve the issue.
The, the problem is, there's no housing stock. I mean, there's no supply. I mean, you can pay him $200,000. And there may be at the time that this happens, right, because there are other subdivisions planned, and builders planning on moving forward with some things. We don't want to compete against private industry.
Nope.
But we want to protect our locals. And so I really like this statement a lot. I like this statement on the roads. I mean, that is my, my greatest concern, is what that intersection looks like.
So you're thinking, Sherry, that say, they finally get a permit to move forward in next summer? If some of these other developments have not been built, then you guys would have to come up with an answer for employee housing.
Well, we'd sit down together and hear what that looks like.
Well, I think, yeah, that's certainly part of the discussion, but, you know, I'm not trying to say you gotta go buy a bunch of land and build a bunch of houses. I'm gonna leave that, how you guys figure that out. But just to pay a bigger salary is not gonna work, because that's happened in Lane County, and nobody can afford to live there that works there. That, we don't want that. That's just the opposite, I think. Although I appreciate the big salaries. Um, there's a lot of ground for sale. There's ground south of the airport that's for sale right now. I know it's a lot of money, but there's, everybody wants a lot of money, but there's other ground around the valley that's for sale that could be bought and developed. And to me, I would think, if you're gonna go back and minus gold and build all these housing for your labors, you could come out here and do the same thing first to secure that.
Or partner with other people. I mean, Tamarack's gonna need some. There's other opportunities that we can find some collaboration and partnership between private and governmental probably.
I like the site personally. I mean, people are concerned about that site. In the planning world, you do not want to put a 300 parking lot in the middle of your growth pattern for any city. It totally shuts down growth when you do that. And so, you know, south of the city has been brought up by a number of people, and personally, that's a terrible thing that we would do to the city of Cascade for their potential growth pattern.
But it'd be, it could be a place for employee housing, a nice, you know...
And integrate that into the city, that would be great. So I don't mind the site, but I do think that, you know, with these mitigation in there, I feel a lot more comfortable.
So you're setting yourself up for a future conversation with that?
Absolutely. Um, and if that agreement in the future says, we're not going to do any, and the board concurs with that, then we go ahead and issue the building permit. If there is no answer out there, nobody's done any housing, there is no development, then that would be a larger conversation with them prior to the issuance of that building permit.
And we'll need it anyway, because their employees, they won't be able to hire employees, just like anybody else can, if they don't have housing to mitigate.
Well, and I think there's gonna be a lot of folks come up here and try and live up here and work there. The other issue that I know, really, a lot of people are having a hard time wrapping their head around is, you know, that's such a pristine area, and it's all beautiful. We've gotten tons of feedback on that. They don't want to see anything out there. But I felt the same way when they built Goslin, when they built Goldust, when they built all that stuff out of Clear Creek. When I was a kid, I didn't want to see all that, but that's just progress in life, so I don't have an issue with that. But I think that's concern of a lot of folks that, you know, little valley is so serene and peaceful. Well, this area was all that way at one time, 40 years ago.
Planning and zoning addressed that in number 18. Here's number approval number 18, which says, after reclamation and facility is no longer needed, a new conditional use permit will be required prior to use. If there's no further use of the site, the structures will be removed and the site reclaimed. And then I've added, since the Planning and Zoning Commission, a bond will be required. I don't know if you want them to bond the reclamation of that site or have some provision that it be reclaimed if, I mean, or have some provision that it be reclaimed if, I mean, we don't want it to sit out there and rot.
No, certainly not.
But we're not gonna approve, you know, a FedEx transportation site out there. So if there's no legitimate use of those structures, then it should be reclaimed.
And so I'm guessing what we would do there, correct me if I'm wrong, Cindy, but if it takes some, I'm gonna say a million dollars to build this facility, then we would ask for a million dollar bond to tear it down?
I don't know what the exact, the legal process of that is. That would be something you would have to do.
What do we do there, boss?
Back to the recesses of my thought. I think it's a low amount for what you're asking for, but I think that you were gonna require some kind of bond. Probably discuss that when we search up.
Could you pay, what is it, ten percent of the bond? So it costs them a hundred thousand for a million dollar bond, correct?
It all depends on what's posted in what you're asking for. So I don't do use any specific amount, but, you know. I don't know what they pledged for, so, you know, I don't really answer to your question. I can research it though, but no, that's something you're interested in having to do.
So could we just stated that it would be?
Our conditions of building would. That gives us time to do all that.
The building permit for that facility?
Right.
So then each facility would have its own bond, or could we bond the whole twenty-five acres?
The reclamation of the site if there's no further use.
So can I talk to them now, even though the public hearing is closed?
Okay. Cindy, I have a question for you too. So in our conversations for the last few months, we've been struggling pretty hard with, you know, coming up with a better way of zoning in Valley County that would, you know, look at areas that we think are suitable for commercial development. And I just wonder if we look at this right now, are we opening the door for future similar use development in that area? That's the fear that I've heard from most of the folks that have weighed in. You know, right now, we're sort of this pivotal moment where we're like, we're not sure that our current land uses, designations are covering what we want them to cover. We're seeing a rise in conditional use of peels coming in. And I just worry that as we move forward with this, are we setting the precedent for that area? Because the last thing we want to do is turn that into another de facto commercial area.
I don't know the answer to that question. I think that that would be lessened with the reclamation requirement of this site. Because if, oh, somebody wanted to start, give me, give me a use that might go out there.
Pig farms are great.
Well, those are agricultural uses.
An idle power, you know, substation.
It's already going out there. Well, they have to apply.
Any other light industrial type of use?
Okay, if, an Amazon hub. Let's do Amazon. If an application came to Planning and Zoning, it would be in the information when being compared that this site will be reclaimed unless there's another CUP and a bond has been provided.
So you're saying essentially you don't think that that would be a problem moving forward?
I really don't. I mean, who wants to be eight miles outside of the city?
My thought on that, Dave, is that, so that's why we need the conversation is because right now, this is what we have to live under. This is the life which we're living with right now. And so it's, you know, we do need a conversation to make sure that, that these don't pop up everywhere. But right now, that's what we're, we're living under. So our loot is actually, our land use is what we have to abide by right now.
Right. But, I mean, is there a better site for this?
You know, personally, I don't mind that site. It is because of the nature out there. It's, they, they, I read that whole thing this weekend, paid by page. It was a long weekend. But they are talking about, you know, protecting the site with increased vegetation and removing it. I don't like it next to a city like they're talking about. There is some issues with, you know, or there is some advantages having idle power, improving the power into this area through that site, but for the commercial use.
I think that really depends on, you joining landlord right now, Brad Little, that he may decide, you know what, this is, this is gonna be twenty, twenty-five years, long after we're gone. He may decide, you know, we need a hotel out here, we need a gas station, we need... I've never seen anything up here built that twenty-five years later was taken down. Always expanded. About the only thing I've seen change is there's some, some business along the highway that eventually failed and they're, they sold and gone residential. But to go in there and tell Brad Little, I'm sorry, but you can't do anything else with this ground. Ooh, I don't know if I want to do that.
It's not that they can't, it's that a CUP would have to be passed.
Oh, sure, oh, sure. He'd have to go through the same process.
Yeah, he'd have to go through a CUP.
I doubt this is gonna go away. I think this is gonna be there forever. Even after Midas Gold has made everybody millionaires and left the country, it's still gonna be there. Now, do we want to, you know, exercise the bond and have it all torn down and turn back to what it is now? I don't know how we can make that call in twenty-five years down the road. Does that make sense?
Protect the county by having a bond in place in case that has to happen, but...
The worst thing is that they go bankrupt and they abandon the facility. That's what I'm concerned about.
Then that's where the bond...
That's where the bond would kick in. And maybe they have an agreement with Brad Little that, hey, if you go bankrupt and it reverts back to him, he may decide to do something else with it too. We, we...
They have no control over that.
We're stepping over rights here that I don't think we can really step over, but...
So what would be the process if, when this facility has run its current usefulness, of course, its current usefulness? What would that process be for allowing another industrial use or light industrial use to come in?
Public carrying.
And buy that facility and open up?
Public carrying county commissioners.
They'd have to get their own CUP.
And it says, after reclamation, the facility is no longer needed. A new conditional use permit will be required prior to use.
So that if they decide to sell it, somebody wants to put a gas station in or engine repair shop because they have plenty of buildings to do that, or even maybe, you know, like a construction guy with a lot of equipment, they'd have to come in and get a conditional use permit to convert that over. So that was, that's how that process would be handled. You guys know as well as I do, once you build it, they will come.
Well, Brad Little, by background, you know, I mean, in that scenario, they're gonna sell it to whoever they can sell it to and...
Or Brad's son, or his grandson. Or they could go in there and put in a huge subdivision and start selling lots.
Michael Betman, light manufacturing client. She did that, neither way out, and then now everything's grown to it.
Yeah.
So that would be the CUP, but if there's no further use, they can't just abandon it? That's what the bond would be?
I can't imagine them abandoning. I can see them selling it to somebody else.
Then you can see, a bond if it's abandoned.
Again, we're looking at the crystal bell, Paul.
So let's just do it. If it is abandoned for, say, a year's period or a two-year period or something like that, then, then we would exercise the bond and have it. Yeah.
So if there's no further use of the site after a five-year period?
It takes about two years for the winter to start messing with stuff up here.
Timeframe do you want?
I don't know. I don't know the magic number, but you leave the house empty two winters in a row, it's not gonna be very good shape up there.
Two years. Two year.
I mean, by then, they're gonna know what they want to do with it or they'll have an opportunity to sell it within that.
Okay, so it says if there's no further use of the site after a two-year timeframe, the structures will be removed and the site reclaimed, a bond will be required.
Now, we have to figure out the value of that bond. And I'm assuming it's all their costs, their paving costs and subsidy costs and building costs and all that, but I don't know how you figure that?
No, we can work on that, but like Department of Lands, they have a very good bonding system, you know, for abandoned mines and gravitists, things like that. It doesn't take as much to reclaim a building site as it does to build a building site. Oh, that's something we can work on and have in place.
And maybe we just leave that, leave that up to them, leave that up to the applicant.
Let them put it together for us, and then we review and improve it.
I have a reclamation bond on my gravel pit out at Barton.
Yes.
And it's, I think, a $200,000 bond, and it costs me a couple hundred dollars a year. When I get it reclaimed and everything passes there, then I get all that money back. So I think that's pretty reasonable.
So a reclamation bond will be required.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I, I think you just need to decide if...
Cindy, I know there was some discussion once, and I don't remember where I saw it. Some folks were talking about turn lanes going into the facility.
Turn lanes into the facility, that's... Originally, it was going to be a roundabout, and I believe the last I T D letter with turn lanes, that was going into the facility that we're talking about.
Oh, going into the facility? No.
Off Warm Lake Road. Because of the more travel, increased travel? I don't know. I'm just asking, is there enough traffic warranted? Because it's gonna be all kinds, buses and every truck.
That is going to be in agreement with Board of County Commissioners and the Road Department. That's that number seventeen or whatever we want is in.
Right, and that was one of the questions I had, is how do we determine what those impacts are gonna look like? I mean, we have to do this time, like, you know, how a road can hold up heavier or increase truck traffic.
That's where this letter and this type of letter are going to kind of look like is when you do the road development agreement. Because there's going to be a very comprehensive road development agreement for Warm Lake Road. How they get into the facility, per block, all of that. That is not, that is...
Well, if we separated it, just the conditional use permit, that's a condition of the conditional use permit.
Yes.
So we're not looking at the entire project. We're just looking at like, what are the impacts to this facility during construction and prior to anything else happening further out? We're still talking about increased truck traffic, heavy truck traffic.
That's sixteen, seventeen. Sixteen is, we'll need an approach permit from the Valley County Road Department. That's, and then seventeen is, shall enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners to mitigate impacts to the road system and Idaho Transportation Department. So that's where we went on to say, prior to any site grading or improvements, except placement of a sign and timber or fuel removal for fire protection.
But they've already kind of got their agreement with I T D already. They haven't, they haven't anything with us yet, but they, that whole study was all a transportation study. Haven't they already made that agreement with I T D?
They're working through that.
So it's not a legal signed document yet?
Not yet. You know, we haven't had input to it.
Yes, you have. I know that the Valley County Road Department, City of Cascade, City of McCall, everybody's been working with I T D and Midas on this transportation study and the transportation plan on the whole quarter, right? The county commissioners haven't participated in those meetings. I don't know if Commissioner Kirkshank did or not.
I don't remember anything with the...
Right. But that's my understanding. I see a separate road development agreement specific to the Valley County Road Department. And that is for the maintenance, repair, turn lanes, anything like that.
Just had some basic conversations, I believe, but I think that needs to be a greater conversation.
Well, I think we need to be involved in that conversation, yes. You know, see what he's proposing, then we can look at, see, when do you reach a point where, okay, we need turn lanes going into this facility because of the increased traffic? I mean, is there a magic number? Do you have to do a traffic study? How does that work?
You can have them do a traffic study for that.
I think they already did.
I mean, they probably have. There's...
It's been a while. I looked at that three weeks ago, so maybe if you see that in there?
I, I believe that there was a traffic study that that was included in that traffic study, and no turn lanes on Warm Lake were required. I have questions about the fact that there was originally a roundabout at the intersection of Warm Lake and Fifty-Five, and that has been negated and turn lanes called out. And I'd like to have a greater conversation about what that looks like and moving that intersection back to the east.
Back to the east, up Warm Lake Road?
How do you do that?
What do you mean?
Oh, that's a much greater conversation.
It is.
Moving the entire road.
Oh.
So that it takes off south of Cascade. But that is part of your road development agreement discussion. That is the larger conversation versus... That seventeen's kind of clunky. I don't, it reads weird. But it should probably, seventeen should read, shall enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners and Idaho Transportation Department to mitigate impacts to the road system. Prior to any site grading or improvements, except placement of a sign and timber or fuel removal, yeah. That would make a lot more sense, actually. Read that again. Shall enter, shall enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners and Idaho Transportation Department to mitigate the road system prior to any site grading or improvements, except placement of a sign and timber or fuel removal for fire protection. So that conversation would start, I would hope, this fall and winter. And that would leave, you know, conversations about the road system and conversations about the housing. And the bond, the reclamation bond for that site-specific facility. Any of the mining stuff, that type of thing will be taken care of by the state and federal government. Now, they, they currently do have conditional use permits for housing at the site. We have entered into, I think, two other conditional use permits.
For, for actual employee housing at the site?
Yes, the workers that go up there and stay.
We've already, we've already run those through the process and everything?
Years ago, when they were doing all the testing. There was a CUP down at Murph's RV Park there in Yellow Pine, which probably is expired by now. And then there was one up at the Stibnite Mine site for housing, infrastructure, that type of thing. If they want to expand that house and beyond what's already there, they would need to amend that conditional use permit, though.
Do you remember how many?
I do not remember how many people. I suspect they're gonna have to have a much larger CUP for that one. It was just for the people that went up and did all the testing.
So then, could we add one on too, that we want a ten percent ROCC fee off everything they sell?
Yes.
Well, they're shaking their head. They didn't say up and down.
I can't see behind me. So I, I think, you know, just kind of back to a basic, you know, the zoning versus the CUP. The CUP allows you to make these conditions, you know, to provide that flexibility based upon the site-specific application. So I think if you believe that is the proper site for this facility, then you need to mitigate those impacts. That I had read earlier, you know, any burdens on the public infrastructure should be mitigated by those conditions of approval. Doesn't mean you have to have everything fine tuned right now. You at least need to set up for that mitigation.
Allows the opportunity to, to work with them and move forward.
So we have those discussions later on, Cindy. So can we talk about things like the fire station in Yellow Pine? Or an ambulance station, or upgrades to those kind of systems that's only gonna service those workers in Stibnite?
If you're going to talk about, if you want to talk, you need to set it up as a condition of approval.
Which we've done.
So what the Forest Service, are those part of the mitigation of the Forest Service law?
Um, I don't think so.
I don't even think it's been, you know, really addressed by the Forest Service document thus far.
You could put in, you know, I know this is kind of weird. We are only looking at the Stibnite Logistics Facility.
Right.
But it's really one of your only times to be able to control anything until you get that CUP for the housing in Yellow Pine or at the Stibnite Mining Facility. You could put a condition in here, I mean, it's your CUP, you can put a condition in. Shall have discussions concerning fire stations in Yellow Pine and, or...
Well, I'm talking not only that, but ambulance service, deputies, sheriffs, and force law enforcement services, trash.
Put it in a condition of approval.
So can we change seventeen to say, you know, not only the Board of County Commissioners and I T D, but any county infrastructure needs, something like that?
So they have to come in and get an additional CUP, though, for housing up there. So once they're approved and they get approved, they have to come in and do their, their mancan approval up there. And to me, that would be more appropriate to address issues that may be in...
At that time, I agree.
Because this is a pretty sparse stretch to be doing something.
Can we do it at that time, Cindy? Will we have that available to us at that time? That's my concern, is we don't get too far down the road and we didn't do this. We should have done it way back in the beginning.
What if they don't come back in for another CUP? What if, I don't remember the number of the housing units.
There wouldn't be...
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty, so that's quite a CUP. People are already approved up there.
So you, you got housing approved to house a hundred and twenty people? Did we get anything as far as ambulance or trash or law enforcement or anything then?
Yeah.
So now, if we don't do it now, when are we gonna do it?
If they amend that for additional, because they say that they're gonna have like five hundred and some employees. I say you do the condition of approval as part of this one, just to have that discussion. I think most of it is going to be a good faith collaboration anyway. I don't know that you have a lot of teeth, but I don't know if I have the wherewithal to say that.
It's something in conditional use. It gives us teeth to enforce it.
Right, I think that there will be a good faith collaboration with them. But you might set it up as a condition of approval, that that discussion needs to take place.
Okay, let's do it.
Well, we could add it in on seventeen, and other county infrastructure or something like that. I don't know the specific wording, but...
I can call it out as a whole new...
You want to do a whole new sentence?
Yeah.
Because I have a sneaky feeling that there's gonna be a lot more trash. There's gonna be a lot more law enforcement needs. And certainly gonna be people get hurt up there, so we're gonna need some way for ambulance. Nobody's gonna get hurt. Nobody's going to get hurt.
I don't know how much I can say, but yeah.
I don't either.
We're not going to open it up and have any problems with that.
But those are things that we need to think about.
And we're talking infrastructure, county infrastructure, and all of that is county infrastructure. Shall enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners to mitigate impacts to other county service providers such as EMS, sheriff...
Trash.
Solidways.
Solidways.
Yeah, solidways, whatever you want to call it. Um...
Recreation. I think they're talking some snowmobile trails or something back in there where he was talking about.
That being something completely different.
That is, it's a...
Yeah, the Forest Service, I think is taking care of that part. But it's a thought.
Trying to think of all of the things.
Administration. For example, then West Rock came in. Because that was a PZ, we entered into a development agreement associated with that. And they actually gave the county funds for administration. I don't know that it's going to get to that point with Midas, because we're not creating lots, we're not selling lots, we don't have all of those building permits and things like that. But it needs to at least be a consideration. I mean, how's it going to impact the assessor's office? How's it going to impact the treasurer? Is it? I mean, there needs to be some sort of conversation.
Well, I would assume it's definitely going to impact law enforcement.
Right, EMS, solidways. But the administration might just be a small conversation, but you at least should probably talk to them about that.
I think that should be part of one of the conditions, yes.
Shall enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners to mitigate impacts to other county services, service providers, such as EMS, sheriff, solidways, administration, et cetera. It leaves the room open for...
And if you reference infrastructure in some way, that's all county infrastructure, right? Because you don't have to, we forget one, and county services, service providers, and infrastructure, okay?
Cindy, can you read the, kind of the notes that we were talking about also for 18? As far as the changes to that line?
Sure. After reclamation and the facility...
If the facility is no longer...
After reclamation and if the facility is no longer needed, a new, no. Because the facility will no longer be needed by Midas. And the facility is no longer needed as a logistics facility.
Well, Cindy, what's to keep there from selling it?
A Midas logistics facility.
They will sell it.
A new conditional use permit will be required prior to use. If there is no further use of the site after a two-year timeframe, the structures will be removed and the site reclaimed. A reclamation bond will be required.
I'm just wondering if we can add into that portion also, since we're going into this assuming, or I guess with the assumption that the DEIS is going to be approved, is that if something changes in that process, that any work done will be reclaimed at that time as well? Because it doesn't specifically say that.
I thought that was...
So I guess, you know, the question is approval of the conditional use permit prior to the DEIS decision or the EIS decision. So in that statement somewhere, I think we'd need to add a condition or a line that describes if that process stops or the project is not going to be approved.
Number three, look at number three. Not me, I forget what you're talking about.
Yeah, that it would go into a reclamation, the bond would kick in at that point. I mean, any work that gets done between now and the timeframe that we're looking at for the Forest Service process to be completed, there's going to be work occurring. That's what you guys said in the meeting, in the hearing. So that this project would begin prior to the completion of the Forest Service process, that it needed to.
Well, this, number three says, you shall not be started until approval of mining activities is approved.
Okay, I didn't notice that.
It was the approval of the facility that needed to be in place so that they know what they're going to be doing. But they can't start until they have that DEIS approval on anything except, in my opinion, timber or fuel reduction.
Okay, I thought that there was a portion in there that talks about like the offices being needed.
Not until, not until the mine's approved. They're going to keep them, in my opinion, up at Donlin or wherever they keep them.
Sure.
Until the mine is approved.
I misheard it then. It was a bad connection on the phone, but I believe that I heard that when I was listening. I made a note of that.
Oh, that's right, you weren't saying, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just for the record, he wasn't on the phone with somebody else. It was during the public hearing process.
During the public hearing process, I called in.
Who are you talking to, Dave?
Yeah. You never know what someone's going to pick up off that one.
Sheriff or prosecutor, can you guys think of anything else we're missing here? You guys have been here long enough to know.
Yes, they are staff.
Okay.
No, other than I'll research the foundation for you.
Right. And so what I would foresee is if you decide you're going to approve this because you like, you think this is the proper site for this facility, then we'll put together the facts and conclusions with all of these conditions of approval, fine-tuned. We would meet again and go through that line by line, all of those conditions, to make sure I captured everything you wanted. What do you need?
It works for me, Cindy. Like I stated some earlier in the fact that there was a lot of input from people that just didn't want to see it out in that beautiful valley. Well, that's been happening all over the valley forever.
Yeah. So I think another big concern was the transport of chemicals. I think that that was one of the concerns that was very loud during your public hearing.
And I really felt like they addressed all that very well. I mean, a lot of that's federal permits, and they have specific rules, and cleanup stations, and all that kind of stuff. I think that's been really over-discussed.
Yeah, it's being transported by somebody with that type of a federal permit. It's not being transported by them. What were some of the other issues brought up that... Well, the housing one was the big one for me, and just going through Cascade. And that's why I just like to have a greater conversation about moving something that's, you know, either side of the river or something within our domain land or if there are concerns.
But the housing one is regardless of where they put that logistics facility. So let's just give you the opportunity to talk about that in the future.
I think we're going down a road that's going to be, at this point, hard to turn around from. I think when we open the door for any kind of development in that area, commercial, industrial, otherwise, that we're going to, regardless of how we end up with our planning, zoning, regulations in the future, we're going to be looking at, that is going to be a place where people can do what they want. I mean, I just think, you know, we've got a scenic corridor right now, and as we move forward, that we're making a decision right now about how that area is going to look in the future.
Oh, I agree with that. We also have a scenic bypass that, you know, I mean, if you stick it right there.
And I'm not, I'm not in any way advocating that citing this along the side of the road is a better option. I've gone back and forth on that issue, you know, since we started, since I started reading this. And I, you know, originally thought that that's where we were talking about citing something like that. And I just, you know, I hate to say it, but I do agree that getting it away from town and away from the scenic corridor is great. We have another scenic corridor that's becoming more and more popular with recreation as it grows.
And I do, you know, I think that too. But if you look at where this is, so Warm Lake has become an established hub for recreation. This is fairly close to Hershey. I mean, there will be an established hub, you know, that could be recreation in the future used that way. So there are uses along Warm Lake Highway, I think, as we move forward, that are going to change in nature from what they are today. And I think, you know, over the next 20 years, it's going to, this whole valley is going to change. And that's why I'm saying we need a conversation about where these things can.
I agree, and I just, I mean, I would say, you know, 65,000 square feet of covered storage, maintenance, office buildings, is a far cry everything. Quaint old lodge on the side of Warm Lake.
It's really hard to swallow because you don't want to see the change, but it's going to come whether you don't want it or not. It's been coming on for a long, long time up here. You know, how do you direct it? Well, you hope that you get enough conditions that when you drive by this facility in Little Valley, that it's not a shambles, that it looks really nice and is well-maintained and well-landscaped. And that's where I think we have the most influence.
Well, and that's why I was really interested in what the vegetation plan was. So, I mean, that is, they stated in all of their materials that I was reading, that that was going to be protected from Warm Lake through vegetation and not that to us going forward. Do we need to place something on a restriction, you know, that makes it a little bit more strict, if you will?
Well, I think the issue, the answer there, sure, would be to require a landscape plan and to be built at a certain time during the building process so that if it's not, then you're in violation of the CUP and we've got an issue.
There's one in here. That's what I thought.
But, you know, a lot of times you'll see somebody build a unit of business or commercial, whatever it is, and never get the landscaping done.
Yeah. No, and that's not appropriate.
And that's not cool. We got to figure out a way to get on top of that.
So...
I know we have the setbacks and vegetation plan in there, but also we might look at, you know, the screen along this highway right now. I mean, I do not, I'm not familiar with the site right there, but thinking about leaving more trees along the side of Warm Lake Road. You know, so it's more natural screening now rather than waiting for some kind of vegetation to grow up in the future. Again, I don't know what that area looks like. I know there's a lot of open land and forests in that area.
I have two new conditions of approval. One is to address your concern about future compatibility. You know, it's more of a statement of future commissions and boards. Use is not to be considered a permanent land use change for compatibility considerations. I, you know, so that in the future, you know, a commission won't say, well, this is the residential use, so that's what we're comparing it to, but this will give them some way to not consider that because it will be reclaimed at some point if it's not approved. Then it's CUP. And the other one is landscaping to provide adequate screening.
From the highway?
From the...
From the scenic highway or whatever you want to call it.
Warm Lake Highway.
You know, I mean, I'm simply glad it goes to your comments, but I just, I'm envisioning this 300-pound parking lot, and I don't want that on the scenic highway.
Nope.
And if we can bury it somewhere, that just makes a lot more sense to me. And that's the consideration.
Yeah, and as I say, I mean, we have ongoing conversations about developable land for homes. And then we're, you know, trying to maintain some of those. And I agree with you. I'm just saying, we're going down a road by allowing this.
Every time we make a decision, we are made now because our land use ordinance is what it is and, you know...
That's the hardest thing about being a PZ commissioner, seeing the change. And you can't be biased just because you don't like it.
I've got good reason to be biased. So do we, what, we take a vote today and then just, and then approve the...
We can, or we can wait and let her come back with the new conditions of approval?
I would recommend that you make a motion, if you choose to approve this, with the conditions of approval for the reasons stated.
Okay.
And then I'll come back with facts, conclusions, with the fine-tuned conditions of approval, at which time we'll talk about those conclusions, those facts, those conclusions, and the conditions of approval.
So at what point will we see that, like, for instance, the road agreement? At what point, so we're going to approve, if we approve this with that as a condition, then we don't necessarily, we're not going to be looking at that prior to approval?
I would hope that you would start looking at that this fall and this winter. You need to start those conversations with them.
Prior to them moving in.
Right. Yeah, before they do any site grading, what was it?
And they might wait until the EIS comes out before they have a room to do that.
Well, they should probably start the conversation to see where the county's headed with their thoughts. You know, and that will give them a heads up that they also need to start maybe talking with some developers or, you know, people putting things in now for guarantees for some housing dedicated to them, type of thing. But those conversations, I would hope, would start after November.
So tell me if I'm wrong, Cindy, but my feeling is to date is we're approving the concept.
No, you are approving the land use at that site.
That concept.
With these conditions of approval.
And then upon approval of the actual mine permit, then we're going to come back and talk about impacts to infrastructure.
Nope, nope, nope. You are approving the land use at the logistics site.
Okay.
Subject to these conditions of approval, which sets you up for the conversations for the impacts to the service providers, the roads, and the housing.
Infrastructure and all that stuff.
And they'll want to come and talk to us because they can't move their...
They can't do anything.
...in place when we sign these agreements.
Now, they might take this, you know, to court or something, you know, to district court and say, but those aren't direct impacts caused by this site. They can do that, but I don't know that they would want to do that. This is your chance to have that conversation with them because all of the activities take place on state and federal lands.
So we're approving the land impact today, the land use.
And then the logistics.
And then Cindy always brings back a week or two later the rest of it for approval, the facts of fact.
There might be three weeks for those. But it will be a document that you'll look at and see if it's your facts, your conclusions, and your conditions. This is your chance to enter into that agreement. Everything else is that, you know, good-faith collaborative effort.
I would think that they're going to come back for a CUP. If they get 500 people up there, they're not going to hold out 120 residents. So we're going to have an opportunity to...
Again, for impacts due to the housing up there. But somewhere between the logistics and the site, there are going to be impacts also.
Yeah, I'm sure there's some we haven't probably even thought of.
Sure.
Okay, what's your preference? You guys want to think about it another week or two? We can do that as well.
I am ready to move on.
So make a motion.
I move that we approve the CUP 20-12, the Stibnite Project Logistics Facility with the amended conditions of approval. Is that enough? To include the additions of approval?
Yes, that's enough.
Do I need to call them out?
No, I don't think you need to name each one of them, no.
Okay.
You might say there's an 18 number, 19 or some number.
Or subject to final approval with the facts.
Have them in, does he get that?
Let me just reread it to make sure that I captured it correctly. Commissioner Mopin made a motion to approve CUP 20-12, Stibnite Project Logistics Facility with the amended conditions of approval to include the addition subject to final approval with the facts and conclusions.
Okay, here's a second.
I'll second that.
Here we go. I'm moving to second. Any more discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, Mary.
Would you like to go ahead and set that facts?
Would you like to go ahead and set that facts, date for facts and conclusions?
What do you want, a couple of weeks? How long would it take, a week?
Three.
Three weeks?
So that, I'm just stopping that.
Man, that is too small for me.
That would be October 26th.
Last Monday of the month. That work?
One o'clock.
One o'clock.
Cindy, do you mind just sending me a wording on how you would like it listed on the agenda?
Well, that's perfect because we're just about out of time, so we did it just right.
So October 26th, the one. The facts and conclusions, that'll give me a, I'll push me this.
Okay, I'm sure we're going to get some nearest emails tonight, texts, and you name it, that's okay. Progress is progress. Thank you, Cindy, great job. Thanks you guys for coming up.
Thank you.
Yep, safe travels. Okay, we got five minutes to our next agenda item, if you need a break.
Yeah, the people that live out in the valley out there, they all support. Yeah, they want it. All the neighbors were up in arms, we've got a whole different conversation, but...
What's the nearest residents out there?
Hello, even in Miami, didn't do live about a mile away? There's one resident in the field.
Does DF have some there before it gets to the Forest Service or is it still all Little?
I'm sorry, what?
So beyond that, facilities, like, um, then there's a DF layout or is it all, is it still Little's or goes up there?
Um, I think Little kind of surrounds it. There's a lot of DF development out there, but it's all for sale. There's some that's sold all around there.
Okay.
At Little's isn't, but the DF development is done. Yeah, there's quite a number of different people out there now.
So it's developing already?
Mm-hmm, it is. Back in the trees, things I can't see.
And that was the whole conversation, like, when lake work got started, you know? Makes sense now for lake work there, but people were furious when all that started. They didn't want it there.
Oh, the commercial stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, act, you know what? We, we still have time. I think we're fine. You guys approved the CUP. And we're, we're still on the record, you might want to make a motion to deny the appeal.
Do we have to have a public hearing for that? Oh, that was, this was, that right? Yeah.
Sorry. So you've approved the CUP, you need to make a motion to deny the appeal. There's nothing, there hasn't been anything in between, so I think you're, you're fine.
Wow, good catch on your part.
Well, it wasn't me.
I move that we deny the appeal of the conditional use permits.
20-12.
20-12. Well, the appeal...
What was the appeal number?
The South, Save the South Fork. The appeal of the Save the South Fork. Let's, let's get the official word.
Yeah, what's the number?
20-12, yeah.
To be, deny the appeal of the P and Z Commission approval of CUP 20-12, Stipnite Gold Project Logistics Facility by Saves the South Fork Salmon.
Here, a second?
I'll second that.
Moving to second, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, the appeal is denied. Don't I have to sign something or send something to Save the Salmon folks? Here's something that you sign and say no, deny?
No, you're, that'd be the fact conclusion. We'll get all that in there.
Okay. That's a good catch on your part.
It appears this speech is totally surrounded by Little problems. That's about far enough. Is it?
Be a nice little valley for another Alamoor. There's some water issues and some soft ground, but... What's that? No, no fire, no ambulance, no nothing out there, but...
Yeah.
Yeah. It's crazy, man, see it all change.
Alamoor is maybe part of the city of Eagle. It's in three counties, three different counties? It's in Ada County, Boise County, and Gem County.
They haven't started much in Boise County yet.
We have enough land available, let's don't put it out there. Alamoor was created because of land issues. They have another one that's right across the road that goes through over to Emmett.
That's part of Emmett, 35,000 units.
Did Alamoor buy that?
Yeah.
Is that what the total stuff that develops?
Oh, no, that's a different one. No, it's a, there's a huge one adjacent to Alamoor.
Going towards the east, up towards Hidden Springs or wherever they call that, all that.
I think that was Alamoor. This is across the street headed toward Emmett.
Headed towards Emmett, yep. More toward, in Eagle.
Can you show me where that is in the map?
David, have you driven up by that?
Where's that?
By logistics facility.
Oh, yeah, I've been up there a lot, I just don't know which parts of it is.
Didn't you see our sign?
I have not been up there recently.
Here's your sign.
This is, we post our signs.
Yeah, all the bigger pieces are.
Yeah, so it's right in the middle of it.
Oh, which way is it from Sue Leapers driveway, north?
East, I don't know which one.
You go on up the highway pass there driveway and it's to the right. There's quite a bit of timber up there, if I remember right.
DF bones, all the other stuff around it.
Okay, we're going to move on to our agenda. We have another action item. This is a memorandum of understanding for single-track sidewalk, 2020-01. Did everybody get a copy of that?
I did add a, a couple things that I think clarified what you wanted.
Yeah, I looked at all of it, it looked fine to me.
I didn't have any problems with it.
Dogs on leash only is probably the biggest one for me, Cindy.
So which one?
Um, it's pretty out the bottom on the second page because that will hopefully sway the ranchers around there. They have some way to file a complaint.
And I think I threw the reclaim on here.
Yes, last one, number seven?
Yeah.
A little bit of whereas, as I felt like I was reading.
Well, I put those in because that's what, you know, makes sense.
It's almost like in a resolution form, isn't it?
It is, that's what I did ask, is resolution.
Oh, and then the, like, the second, the second whereas and the third were the ones referring to the agricultural uses.
I thought that Steve had sent in something about signage too that he had used already, so it's good.
Dave, are you good with it?
Absolutely.
So I entertain a motion to approve this, MOU?
A motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding for the single-track sideways, which I'll try to...
Moving to second, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'm handling someone that's constantly, lack of appeal.
Jug handle?
Jug handle. I don't want to take the credit for that one.
Okay, we have about eight minutes for our next agenda item, which is an executive session.
Mr. Chairman, what? Matter of right, do you not have one for this?
Did we forget to do some?
Uh, Carol was going to run it. The MOU.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So Carol, do you have that done or we need, need more time on that MOU? Okay, we got plenty of time. Yes, sir.
So, um, I just received, I received an email back from Catherine, who was looking at the, from the Forest Service, was looking at, you know, business.
Oh, yeah.
I can't hear you, hang up for a second.
You're getting printed the wrong time, sorry.
Yeah, what was that?
So that site up there, it would be a shipo, so that would be probably no more building up there because it's a historical site.
Right.
So it would be more, if you wanted to open it up into our building, probably, they'd still have to use the network. But I will forward you, I tried to, but it's not letting, I'll do it from my desktop.
Great.
So you have all that information.
So it's a purple site, you can't go in and do anything with that, or what, a neeko?
Do anymore. That site was there, and then we took it on a tax, a warrant of disstreamed.
Oh.
And then, um, put our stuff in there. That was a private person who had that, but to start with, a with their company or reveal.
Did you, did we take the actual lookout too or just?
Not the lookout, no.
Just the site?
The shed and...
Yeah, yeah.
Groundwork tower.
And that's been, that's been back in the, I mean, I was working at that time, too. So anyway, I'll forward you that information. I know I have, probably have it in mind, but this way you've got it all fresh.
Interesting. So you can keep a piece of ground on the warrant of disstream, but you can't keep one on a taxi itself?
We took it because they owed the county money, and then they made the decision to keep it as a radio tower area. There was a private person who had it at the time. But then, anything else up in there, it has to go through them so it doesn't interfere with the lookout, which is now a historical site. And so they like to keep everything clear and... You probably understand it better because you're Forest Service.
I don't know which, yeah, as I said, it's beyond my...
Beyond yours, okay. But I will forward those, that communication. And I'll let Dave, I'll put David too, so that he's knows that she's already reached back out to us. And, and Jake had wanted more information, I guess, on what we really were asking.
That's probably not an option. Who knows, anybody that owns the top of the hill.
It's all federal lands, almost all of it.
Snowbank all federal?
That's FAA has their sites up there. There's microwave system type communications for ISP and for the FAA, and I think there might be some others.
There's an AT&amp;T cell phone tower out from it, back towards this side of the ridge.
There's camera.
But I'm not sure if that's the, going to get the area that you want, but anyway.
Everyone we know where we feel like we're making forward progress, we get pushed back when it comes to the riverbank. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm trying to think where else you could do it. You need electricity, you got to have electricity to the site. So, a donner maybe?
I wonder if there's a way to secure the equipment that we have inside versus, you know, if somebody has the access to that shed, they go in there, but is there a way to, for us to secure our equipment? Really, like, if anybody who's a technician is going up there to service that electronics equipment, we're going to know who it was. I mean, yes, there is a risk, but we're talking about our EMS radio system. I mean, is that a huge risk, I guess is what I'm asking.
Wondering if we could approach this more like the ham operators do, where they get a permit for their own tower. You see them down in Boise a lot, ham operators, where it's a huge tower, just a single, straight-up, it's got guide wires.
That goes back to the permitting process to the Forest Service though, because you're putting an installation in.
No, but I mean, like, on the valley floor and private, on some private ground.
Well, that's, as I say, that's what we were saying about the cell phone towers, is I mean, I don't know how tough those are, but...
You'll go very far. I don't know, I almost feel like we'd be more, we'd be smarter to just to figure out a way to get the conduit in the ground for now, take smaller steps.
They made a, they did a survey to look and see what that would look like. It's like $65 million to Forest Service Valley County.
That's the last mile stuff, they call the last mile stuff. Yeah, I know, we looked at one time about, okay, if we had a subdivision, they all got to gather and pay for their own, could they do that? And they said, they could do that, but that doesn't mean that we're going to provide the wire going through the pipe. Well, we're not going to go to that much expense. And then you guys say, no, sorry, we're not going to do it. There's got to be some charity there. Oh, and that's in the hot seat today? Oh. Okay, I entertain a motion then to go into an executive session for Article 742061B.
Second.
By Roanoke, please.
Big nine.
Asbrook High, so Doug, we're in at 2:28.
Didn't we tell you this is a celebration of something?